It is seven o'clock. I will call the meeting in order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so let's see.
I'll make motion to approve it.
Thank you. We got a motion by council member Henry.
I'll second.
And a second by council member Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, community comment. Does not look like we have anybody online or in person for community comment. So let's move on to presentations and reports. Number five point one, the Carver County Attorney's Office report from our Carver County Attorney Mark Metz. And I was talking to Mark just a few minutes ago before the meeting and he said he was working cases in traffic and misdemeanor court today. So I made him promise he'd tell us a fun story from traffic and misdemeanor court.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and your council members and other staff and people watching at home. So thanks for having me again. If you was at Dunhill, you invited me to come as the county attorney to just give a report, talk about what services we provide, types of prosecutorial services for your city, and go through some numbers, some cases that we handled and what the contract's gonna be. So I'll go through that and then I'll, I'll talk about some of the highlights in our office as well and some of the challenges. And I'll talk a little bit about some traffic court, which ties into our staffing issues.
Make sure we're paying attention. You're gonna have the good stuff at the end.
Yes, yes, they have to speak for that.
I appreciate that tactic.
Be respectful of your time. I won't take too much time. But as you know, the Carver County Attorney's Office by statute is mandated to prosecute all felonies and gross misdemeanors that occur in the county and every city. And each city can prosecute or hire a prosecution team or firm or our office, handle petty misdemeanors, misdemeanors, gross misdemeanors. So we've talked about speeding tickets that occur in Carver, DUIs that occur in Carver, domestic assaults. So ten of eleven cities contract with us, our county attorney's office. And the city of Chan has hired their own firm to do that and that's been traditional for twenty and a half years. So that gives a little bit of background. Then when we're looking at the fees, we try to divide them up as equitably as we can with the number of cases we handle in these ten cities. And we look at a three-year average. And I think it really works well and promotes justice, in my humble opinion, when our office is prosecuting cases, in large part because that is what we prioritize and that's all that we do for that division. We have our victim witness services in-house and we actually have two full-time victim witness people that do a fantastic job to work with our victims and getting restitution and getting their input. And we're centrally located as well. We just have that historic trust, I think, with you and the other cities as well. And we don't look at it as though, wow, there's these big cases and small cases. They're all important. And I know that Fleet Farm is important to you and the citizens and it's important to us too. Because it's a crime or an offense and people should be accountable and have those consequences and have an opportunity to, though, to make amends. So with that being said, this year, the determination of contract fees is one hundred seventy-eight thousand.
Thank you.
Did I do something? Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Hopefully I was talking loud enough.
We have tens and tens of people watching online and now they can hear you.
Yes, good. Am I gonna start over, bud?
No, that's fine.
So one hundred seventy-eight thousand nine hundred twenty-eight dollars is the county attorney's staff costs. And we take the fine revenue and we reduce that along with this contract cost allocation, which is a contribution by the county board that they want to lower the cost for the cities because they see the value in having our office prosecute these cases. And so, so that's a, an added certainly bonus that they've been doing for a long time. And then we get that surcharge of seventy-five thousand six hundred and sixty dollars for 2023 and then that's divided across the ten cities based upon a three-year average of the caseload. All right, and then we, we have this surcharge and we talked about this, that we're trying to have a cost of, of living essentially, the increased inflation, things like that for whatever county personnel costs. And we look back to the last year and so we look at the countywide and that's four percent. So that's added on then. All right. Next one. All right, there we go. So it's a little smaller and maybe a little more difficult for some to see, but if you look Carver starts and we look at this three-year average, in 2019, sixty-six cases we handled for your city, 2020, fifty-two, and then seventy-seven in 2021. So we've seen an increase and we look at that three-year average and I think part of that increase is just, I think part of it's due to our deputies. We've had more deputies now that we're getting more fully staffed. Had more people living here, moving out, right? So that's natural. And then you take Fleet Farm. So there are a fair amount of offenses that occur there. And it's a good comparison looking at the other cities and it fluctuates. Some years it's less for certain cities, it stays the same, it goes up. Fortunately, I think in costs, it went up more for you, but that's just the nature of what we're doing. All right, so that's, next slide is the usage and rate comparison. So you'll see that you just take, obviously Chaska has forty-seven point four percent of the misdemeanors, petty misdemeanors. It's almost half of the caseload that we have. And you take other really small cities like New Germany, that's not even one percent. We take that average and then we have a contract rate. And then, so we see a change for Carver, which was more than three thousand dollars increased due to that increased caseload. And then Chaski, you could see just right below it, went down almost seventeen hundred dollars. And some other cities like Waconia went up thirty-five hundred dollars. We just did more cases. So the proposal is for seven thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-three cents for 2023 that I'm asking that this council approve. All right, so any questions before I go on to the updates about that?
I think so.
Okay, so, updates on our office. We'll go with the positive. Start with the positive. Our Veterans Court and our Drug Court are doing great. And it's such a collaboration and a commitment that people have in the system from veteran volunteers to court services to defense who represent these individuals and certainly, you know, our office and the prosecutors. And it really has proven to be effective. It's proven to reduce recidivism and it's evidence-based. And we knew that going into it and that's why we promoted this. But that's really a, it's heartening to see because it's hard when you have the revolving door of individuals and you try to get them help, but you don't sometimes have enough resources that you can have this intensive supervision and have them come in consistently to get tested, how are you doing, here's consequences if they, you know, have a failure, do a weekend in jail. So there's accountability. It's not a free ride. It's a hard, these are hard programs to succeed. And so we've had a number of graduates already in Drug Court and that started in the last two to three years. Veterans Court's been going since 2014. So what we did also is we joined forces with Dakota County with our Veterans Court. We did that because frankly, we didn't have enough numbers. We just didn't have enough people to meet the state's requirement, which is strange that we were doing well, but you don't have enough people in your court, so you don't get funding. So we reached out to the Dakota County Attorney, right now Kathy Kena, and she embraced that and said, yeah, let's look at it. And so they're joining us. And so we share some resources and they come to Carver County and that's really pushed our numbers up. So we get that funding. And we care about people in the first district and the entire state of Minnesota. We want people to be, you know, healthy and get an opportunity to live a productive life and that's what's proven effective with that. All right, so tied into that is the opioid settlement. And we were part of, Carver County was part of this opioid settlement and the county decided to hire a private law firm because they had the expertise and that's, I think every single county did that. And so I worked with our county attorneys for the last couple of years and our attorney general and in our private counsel. And credit goes to them for really getting a, a great settlement. And our focus and priority was to try to get as much money injected back into the local communities because if you'll remember with the tobacco settlement, it went into the state general fund and that money didn't go back into the people that needed it. So I think we got seventy-five percent of that global settlement and we pushed really hard for that. So we're gonna get about eighty thousand dollars starting this year. I think it's for twenty years. That really helps, obviously. And so we can use that for treatment. We can use it for our Drug Court if we need it to. But here's the great news. Just last week, we received a grant enhancement that we applied for for our Drug Court and we got seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we did not expect to get this grant because we heard that it was very competitive and they were gonna give out fewer grants and more money. But we scrambled because it was, we had like a month to put all this together and we had to enhance our program, take probation violations, hire private counsel, do some other things that enhanced it. And so we, we got it. So that's great. It's gonna be more work because whenever you deal with the federal government, you're gonna do this, this and this, but that's gonna help because now we can take some of those other funds that we have, you know, with the settlement, put that into the local communities. And that, that was really a, a positive for all of us. Now you'll, as you know, it's election year and, and we have three of our commissioners that are up for election as well. And so we're going through the budget cycle just like you. And so we'll, we'll see in December what our board recommends. Right now, they have a four point nine percent cap. So that's the highest that they can go. It could go lower. And critical to our success is we have one of our most senior attorneys who's retiring and he does our data practices and he's been with us for, you know, close to twenty years, Tom Haynes, and did a great job. So he's retiring. So in this budget, we had requested a full-time position. So right now it's recommended. So we'll see what the board does with that. But the, the biggest challenge, one of the biggest challenges we're facing is the staffing, like everybody. And so we've lost some really skilled, good lawyers for higher pay. And it's hard to compete with that, but the county's looking seriously, seriously at that. And I certainly appreciate that and recognize that, that we have to adjust this to recruit and retain top-quality people. So that's why I was in court today. And Peter Ivy, our chief deputy, has been helping out, doing court. And we've been doing, we're, we're gonna do some Drug Court and some Veterans Court, things like that. So it was kind of, it was, it was, I don't know, fun's the right word, but it was, it was nice to get back into court. And so we do the Monday morning is the traffic calendar. So it just ranges from people that got speeding tickets that want to see if they can keep it off their record to DUIs and domestic assaults, you know, not the most serious cases, but serious enough. So probably had about fifteen cases on and the judge will call the cases and they'll say, do you want to talk to the prosecutor, me, or, you know, what are you offering? So one of the individuals got a ticket for driving after suspension. And it can be this revolving door where they can never get their license back. And so we really want to get their license back. So we tell them, get a valid license and we can consider doing what's called a stay of adjudication to keep it off your record. So it doesn't go on your record and you got a valid license now and you pay a fine. So individual comes in, you know, not a young man, but not, you know, under eighteen, but he comes in and, and he says, I have a valid license. All right, we check, he has a valid license. Said, all right, one hundred forty-dollar fine, stay of adjudication, just stay clean for a year. He says, well, can I ask you, why did they pull me over? So I started reading the reports. This, this young man was with his dad. So they're up at, at, you know, with, in front of the judge and it was a senior judge as well. And I said, all right. Well, so I started reading the report. I said, well, they pulled you over and you had a, a head, front headlight that was out and a taillight that was out. So they pulled you over and then the officer smelled marijuana in your car. And then he asked you, do you have any marijuana? And then you said, yes, I have some marijuana in a grinder and some drug paraphernalia. And he asked if you could get out of the car and you gave him that and he secured that. And here it says that they gave you a warning and didn't give you a ticket for having the marijuana and the drug paraphernalia and they wrote you for the driving after suspension. And you also didn't have proof of insurance, but you said you had on the vehicle, so they gave you a break on that. The judge looks at him and he says, you might want to stop asking questions because this seemed going pretty well for you. And looked at the dad and says, were you aware of this? And he was kind of like, no, I don't think so. So you get a lot of, a lot of interesting people and things like that. But we try to, we try to work with them as well, but then there's other cases that are just too serious. If you have a car crash that, or they're speeding, that we can't keep it off people's record. But I, I like to think that we are reasonable when it comes to that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. So that's a real highlight version of our office. And I, I really always emphasize this, that it's the great staff that we have that dedicate themselves every day and they don't expect congratulations or other, they just, they do it because they are public servants like you are. And I, I, I know the public knows that too because I think they care about that and that's a great example of this enhancement, that they had enough work to do. We said, can you do it? So four of them got together, court services and other areas and said, we'll scramble. And got the data and look, it, it pays off. And so they're really committed to that. And, and I can assure you that, you know, you're in good hands with our office and handling these cases. And, you know, we're responsive. So if you have questions, you certainly can contact us.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions? Comments?
It is some unsolicited feedback, but.
Yeah.
Mark's team does a great job. Like they make it so easy for, with emails and phone calls. They just, when that, you get that kind of service, you recognize it and appreciate it. And I don't often get a chance to see you in person to say that. So pass that along to your entire team. It's, uh, it's not worrisome for us to call. We don't feel like we're bothering anybody. They're always really responsive and so that's very much appreciated.
Well, thank you for that. I'll pass it along. I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Have a good night, Mark.
You too.
All right, no public hearings tonight. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by council member Henry.
I'll second.
And a second by council member Sarah. Any further discussion? Nope. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes. All right, this is items eight point one, the 2023-2027 Long-Term Financial Plan. Shuti.
Thank you. All right. All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So tonight we are going to be taking a look at the Long-Term Financial Plan once again. So this plan identifies the future need for capital improvements, infrastructure projects, staffing. And it also looks at what kind of rates do we need to charge to support this? And what kind of operations are we going to need for taxes, utility rates in our general water, sanitary and stormwater funds? So let's just get right into it. So the long-term plan, I, like I said, it's going to identify all of those things for the next five years. It also incorporates our capital plan. And that will finance major projects and equipment in both the general fund and the enterprise funds. And this is a tool. So council and staff will use this tool for the next, we update it annually, but it is kind of helping us project out the next five years, so. The two staffing additions that we have planned, one is in 2025 and this is a public service tech utilities position. We're planning on this position at an annual salary of eighty-five thousand. And then we have a communications specialist planned in the year of 2027. Here I've laid out the top cost by, in the long-term financial plan, by cost, the capital improvements. And so at the top, we have the Southwest Sewer Utility Extension. Right now, we're estimating this at about four million dollars. This is all dependent on if it's going to happen, when it's gonna happen. I mean, this is a really big if. And then we have the downtown park at two point seven million. I'm not gonna go through all of these, but then down at the bottom, we have the well one and three generator and control upgrades that are planned for next year at five hundred thousand. I've shown this slide before. So for 2023, I've broken out the capital improvements by how they're going to be paid for. So at the top, you see the special capital fund will be paying the Third Street Bridge and certified levy payment. We have the general fund paying, paying a tractor with plow and so on and so forth. Again, I broke this out by fund and by payment type. So we do, in 2024, we're planning on bonding for some of these payments for capital equipment. And if that sewer extension does come through, we may need to bond for that. But the big thing here is that public service storage facility building as well as their turnout gear addition. I did highlight that we would be bonding for both of those things. Here's our proposed utility rates and these are all called out in the Long-Term Financial Plan. And our operations, you know, kind of rely on what we plan for these rates to be. So in 2023, we're looking at a three percent increase in water, a three percent increase in sewer and a five percent increase in our storm rates. Here's an example of an eight-thousand gallon usage water bill. I compared it to 2022 to 2023's proposed rates. Overall, this is a three dollar and ninety-three cent increase per month for the average eight-thousand gallon bill. So overall, with that three percent, three percent and five percent, it averages out to be a three percent bill increase per month. Here I just looked at some of our peer cities that we use in other areas of the city when we look at fire department and any other kind of areas that we want to compare Carver to. And I calculated an eight-thousand gallon consumption water bill and Carver is at a hundred and twenty-nine dollars for next year. And that's kind of, you know, right in the middle. And I just want to point out that these cities all have different infrastructure types. The city of Dayton is just getting into city water, so that they're bringing a lot of their residents off of their septics. And so they're getting into city water and sewer. So their bills might go up in the future. I mean, we just, we don't know the story behind a lot of these cities, but this is our story. We know we have a new water treatment facility that we have to support, so. Here is a nice graph that's in the packet for the long-term plan. This is our projected city tax impact on an average home. So when I say an average home, this is an average valued home. So this year, that amount is four hundred and ten thousand-ish, okay? Last year it was three hundred and twenty thousand-ish, okay? So when, when you're looking at that column on the left there and we're going twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, that average value is adjusted per year, okay? So that value is changing by what the long-term plan thinks that average valued home is going to be each of those years. And that's the tax impact to that average valued home. So it's the same home, just changing value every year. Here's our future debt balances per the plan. Now this is a, you know, we look at those debt that I highlighted in 2024 and it highlights the area, the funds that we would have the debt in. So you can see there's a little dips and spikes. You can see in 24 where we would be taking some out. We have some falling off in 23 and then it gradually kind of decreases to 26 again. So with the Long-Term Financial Plan, I just wanted to highlight a few things to remember that that's exactly what it is. It's a plan. Events and circumstances, you can just even know that in 2022, just in the last month, things are always changing. Okay, we need money from this fund to go to this or this project came in over budget or under budget. And so now our plan changed. This is a tool that we are going to use for decision-making. After the plan is adopted, we are not going to update it again until next budget season because things are always gonna be changing. So we're just gonna use this as a general idea for what our rates are gonna be and where are we going. And then we know our capital improvements and how we're going to pay for them. And I just threw this out there. Although the capital items go through 2027, maybe we can, if we know what we want to start planning for, we can always start making a ten-year plan in the future for capital items. And I also mentioned this before, but our fee schedule is reviewed in early November for adoption in December. So a lot of the rates that are brought up in here will be on that fee schedule that you guys will see in November for adoption in December, as well as the utility and connection fees. So I will take any questions if you have them.
All right, questions?
I don't have any questions. On this slide though, I really liked that number three, starting to think beyond the five years.
Yeah, I don't have any questions either.
Because we've been reviewing it most of the time.
Yeah, I know. I know.
Go through all the details. I, I do also, I do want to say that the slide that you have about the projected tax impact, I think is really impactful, just saying that we're going down from here on out, right? And this is a, this is a big five-year look and there's some not insignificant items on this list here. So I feel like this demonstrates the city is doing a really nice job managing over time where we need to spend, right? And it's not all lumpy all over the place and it's, it's well-planned, so. Thank you for that one. I don't have any questions.
All right, yeah. And to echo what Joy said, for those who, tens and tens of people who are watching at home, this is probably the fourth time we've seen this. So if it seems like we don't care, nothing could be further from the truth. We just have.
They have it memorized.
We have it memorized. Um, okay, let's see. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve the 2023 to 2027 Long-Term Financial Plan.
I'll second.
Motion by Mary Johnson and a second by council member Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Right, thank you. Um, Mr. Mayor, Communications.
I have no updates. Thank you, Council.
All right. Ben, do you want to start tonight?
Sure.
Put me on the spot.
Um, we did not have a September Planning Commission meeting. We will have a October Planning Commission meeting. And there was something on the, where is it? There it is, on the consent agenda, the donation of the real property from Dick and Jeanette Linsen. I'd just like to thank Dick and Jeanette personally because they have donated, well, a community park and they've done a lot for the city. Long, long, long time resident of Carver and I just want to thank Dick and Jeanette again.
Thank you. Kristi, I don't have anything. Okay. All right, I don't have anything. Joy.
Nothing for me.
I have a laundry list, so you guys are excellent.
Whoop, boy.
Stop. Um, let's see. I was, after our last council meeting, I hopped a flight the next day and I participated in the Transportation Alliance fly-in to Washington DC. So we were out there for two days advocating with our federally elected officials. We talked to Tom Emmer, met with Amy Klobuchar and then staff members from Tina Smith and Michelle Fishbach. And it was kind of like two days of go, 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 go and wait and wait and wait and meet and then wait, wait, wait. But it was really good. Brent, so Randy Maluschnik is the chair of the Transportation Alliance and he reached out to Brent and Brent reached out to me. They essentially scholarshiped my trip out there, so it was no cost to the city of Carver. So a really good opportunity. And while the theme was transportation, you know that I talk to everybody about Carver's loving projects. So hopefully to get more traction on that, but also expressed our excitement for the money that we did get. Um, let's see. Three of us who are sitting up here participated on the Carver Candidate Forum on the 22nd of September. So that is online and it's good for everybody to take a look at. Um, we had a Carver County Meet Leaders Meeting on September 23rd. That's the one that is the school district. Um, and then the city managers and mayors from the four communities that are in the school district, the county board. We learned about the school district's strategic plan and the work that they're doing on their consent decree. Also connected with Ryan Fricki. I've been meaning to connect with him in the last couple of years. Well, he's only been principal for one year, but last year was tough, this time connecting with him. They're off to a really great school year at Carver Elementary and it was good to connect with him. Fellow Packers fan, I don't know if you guys saw, but he lost a bet for the Packers Vikings game where he had to wear a Vikings cape and a purple shirt the morning after. So he's a good sport. Uh, we had a Carver Fire Relief Meeting on September 26th and there was a lot of talk about potentially transitioning over to Para, which Brent had mentioned a little bit earlier during the work session. Um, we had a Carver County Mayor's Meeting last Friday. We had a Carver County Mayor's meeting last Friday, and then also, last Friday was a busy day. I also was back at Carver Elementary helping to conduct interviews for Biz Town. And I don't know if you remember when your kids did it, but what it is, is it's through junior achievement, and these kids are interviewing for roles in their town. So there, somebody wants to be the mayor, somebody wants to be a Delta gate agent, and all kinds of stuff, and so they're interviewing, and then they're actually gonna take a field trip to go to Biz Town as a place, and they get to play these roles. So if they've successfully interviewed for these jobs. So really cool to be a part of that, and really to see, cool to see, like, fifth graders who can, like, ace the eye contact part of an interview and, like, be able to say, like, why would you be good at being a Delta flight attendant? You know, and be like, well, you know what? Play it on the playground every once in a while. I think I'm really good. So it was just a really cool experience. Last Friday was also the Carver Fire Relief Golf Tournament, which was a little bit different this year in that they split the proceeds between the Fire Relief Association and then the families of Mel Nelson and Jeff Wardish, who are the two firefighters who passed away from a car accident about a year ago. We have the water treatment plant ribbon-cutting earlier tonight. And then just a quick heads up and reminder that tomorrow night is the Fire Station and Public Services, Fire Department and Public Services open house from five to eight P.M. That's it for me.
Are you sure?
Uh, yeah. Yep, I'm sure. Let's see. So with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make motion to adjourn.
We have a motion from Councilmember Henry. A second, a second from Councilmember McKnight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Good evening.